Good evening. I'd like to call the Winterville Town Council meeting to order. Today is Monday, September the eighth, twenty twenty-four. The time is six o'clock. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Councilman Johnny Moore. After Councilman Moore and the invocation, we must all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First of all, I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. And secondly, I'd like to say that the ones that didn't know, my mother passed away about two weeks ago, and she was ninety-six years younger. So I just want to let everybody know that she's in a better place. And I say, do all you can while you can with your mother and your dad. Don't forget about dad also. We love mom, but don't forget about dad, okay? All right. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come right now and want to give you thanks for this wonderful blessed day, a day that is so beautiful. Thank you for allowing all of us to come here tonight to represent. We thank you for our leaders here, our council, and all of our staff and manager, right on down to the staff. I want to thank you so much for our citizens, something that you consider us as a slice of good life. And we receive that, and we thank you for that note. Our Lord, lead us and guide us here tonight. And we know that we might have opposition, but at the end, we are here for one purpose, to represent our town that you have. Allow us to serve the town of Winterville in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If we could all please stand and take your hats off. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the recovery of which it stands, one nation under God, individual for clarity and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight to our town hall meeting. I have a few people I'd like to recognize. And also to let you know, Councilwoman Robinson wasn't feeling well tonight. And also too, our Fire Chief, father-in-law, passed away today. So please keep Chief Moore and his family in your prayers. Tonight, we have with us Chair of the Pitt County Commissioners, Mr. Mark Smith is with us tonight. And also too, we have Mr. Lindsey Griffin, which is Chair of GUC Board. And also too, you'll be hearing from our new president of Pitt Community College. I'll let her introduce herself. So make sure, got anybody else out there? But, so with that being said, again, my name is Ricky Hines, and I'd like to welcome y'all here to our town hall meeting. I'm gonna turn it over to our town manager for roll call, please.
Mayor and members of the council, we are back online with our voting system. So as we take roll call, I would ask you to use your remotes and please log in your presence for this evening's meeting. Mayor, everyone who is with us is present and accounted for.
Thank you. I need to silence my phone. I'm sorry. Nobody never calls me.
Do we need to excuse Ms. Robinson? Okay. No, she did say she was not feeling well and would not be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the roll call. Next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, members of council, if I could just point out that you do have some additional public comment speakers that have been, those sheets have been provided at your seats. You also have two updated agenda items, which have been provided to you. They were in your original packet, but the abstracts have been updated, and you will find those changes highlighted in yellow.
I'd like to make motion that we accept the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Motion made by Councilman Johnny Moore, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell. In the discussion, if none, please use your clicker to vote, please. Motion carry. Thank you. Next up is, we have a presentation from our new Community College President, Dr. Maria Far. If you could step to the podium over here, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and all of the town council for having me here today. So it has been right at three weeks since I took this position, and I could not be prouder to lead a college that has meant so much to this community. And I will say also, in my very first week, I was part of the watermelon festival, and you can't beat that. So it has been an amazingly warm welcome. We had wonderful hospitality by the mayor at the watermelon festival. But I think the most important thing is that at Pitt Community College, we are a part of this community, and we really appreciate the support from our leaders, as well as from our citizens. We hope to be the workforce development agency for our community. But what we bring is a level of service that we hope you will see in what we do in education and training. And I appreciate also having Mr. Smith here, who also attended our first Board of Trustees meeting, where the work of the college is, as you do here, looked at, governed, and made public. So anything that we can do to serve you better, we are here for you. And I thank you. I would be very happy at any time to come and talk a little bit more about the college when I get a little more time in my tenure.
Well, again, we'd like to welcome you to Winterville and welcome you to Pitt Community College.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have some proclamations. We have proclamations, and they're in our package, for nine-eleven day of remembrance, twenty-four. Then we have one for the Power, I mean, Public Power Week, twenty twenty-four. And we have a proclamation that Councilwoman Dr. Harrell will read.
Good evening. The proclamation for Recovery Month, September twenty twenty-four. Whereas it is essential to celebrate the resilience of individuals who have bravely faced their struggles and have made significant strides towards a healthier, more fulfilling life. And whereas this month serves as a vital reminder of our ongoing journey that many individuals face as they work towards recovery from substance use disorders and mental health challenges. And whereas this proclamation serves as a call to action for each of us to prioritize our health and support one another. And whereas Recovery Month not only highlights the commitment of these individuals, but also emphasizes the importance of community support, education, and advocacy. And whereas together, we can break the stigma surrounding addiction and mental health, fostering a more supportive environment for all. And whereas, let us take this opportunity to recognize the numerous organizations, healthcare providers, and volunteers who dedicate their time and resources to support those in need. Their unwavering commitment is instrumental in guiding individuals toward recovery and rebuilding their lives. And whereas, together, let us commit to making Winterville, as I say, the wonderful town of Winterville, Winterville a beacon of hope and recovery where every person feels valued and supported. And therefore, Richard E. Hines, Mayor of the town of Winterville, hereby proclaims September twenty twenty-four as Recovery Month. And witness whereof, he does set his hand and calls the seal of Winterville to be affixed this ninth day of September twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell, for that. Next up, we have our public comment section. Before we go into public comment, tasked to read this. The public comment period of thirty minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item, including the agenda, or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville for any item included in the public hearing section of the agenda. Residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites public comments on the item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting, except during the public comment period or as part of the public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes. And no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by a speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a further council meeting, or may refer the matter to the town staff for disposition. Copies of the town public comment policies are available in the rear of the Assembly Room. And tonight, the first one. Mr. Wayne.
Heizer.
Heizer. I didn't want to mess up your name. I've been working on it.
Yeah, I live at one sixty-three Lidsmore Drive and also two sixteen Foxcroft. And now, no, my house is not for sale. I don't want any funeral expenses. I don't want any car warranties, because I get these calls every day. But anyway, that's just a little joke. But anyway, the trash is not a joke. And I know communities all around the state and the cities and counties have to cut back on costs, and I don't know when it was negotiated. But if you talk to GFL, the current supplier of the removal of, I can't even remember the right word to use. I use the term woke words. Because if you use the word refuge or garbage, it does, they reprimand you on the words. But that's another side issue. When I called the city of Winterville about the exchange, my larger, blue recyclable trash can for a green one, it took a little bit of time to get to the right party. Finally, I did. Part of my issue was solved right away that day. But it had to do with the fact that when I moved here nine years ago, fourteen days after I bought the house, my house in Virginia sold. And because my house in Winterville did not contain any trash containers, I brought the ones that I had purchased in Virginia, which is what we had to do in that community. I brought them here and started using them for the last nine years. So when they took my trash can, garbage can, whatever you want to call it, that you'll get corrected if you use the wrong term, as I've said. But when they exchanged it, I noticed right away, it was shorter and it was skinnier. Now, I don't know if you all know that. You can see some of the different colors out there now, blue and green and lime green, the new ones. But what happens is, they're smaller. And when I talked to somebody in Winterville, they said, oh, no, they're all the same size. And he quoted some dimension, you know, not dimension, but volume, cubic feet or cubic yards or whatever it happened to be. They're not the same. And if the city of Winterville is paying for something that's supposed to be the same, you ought to get a refund, because they are definitely smaller, and they hold less trash or recycled materials, okay? I used to put out recycles once a week, because that was what was offered. Every, you know, it was one day a week, and then the next day a week was the garbage or refuge or whatever the woke name is you're supposed to use. But in any case, now, you know, I have to, before it got smaller, I would have to put all the trash in there, jump up and down on it in order to put the rest of it in, to make sure two weeks filled up the container for one week. So just putting that out there, it's not really a complaint, it's informing you that. Because maybe you're not aware of it. You're paying for a service you're not getting, or you think you're getting, but you're not getting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ross Peterson.
Well, that three minutes go quick.
Yes, sir.
So before you start the three minutes, thank you, Johnny. I just brought back my eighty-nine-year-old mother-in-law, my eighty-three mother from Outer Banks, took on a trip. So sorry to hear about your mom. All right, my name's Ross Peterson. I live at twenty-four thirty-four Cannon Road. Like gentlemen before, I am here to talk about recycle. You know, I've been here since the mid-nineties, I think population thirty-five hundred. Now we're at ten thousand. You're gonna charge me more taxes, but you're gonna take away my services. You know, in today's time, you know, we got Amazon boxes galore. Please see my wife about that. And then we got plastic bottles galore. I put out my recycling more than my trash. Now I can't do that. So where does that go? It goes in the trash. So again, you know, in this green earth that we live in, Winterville has decided to go against the norm of being green. So again, I would just encourage that, you know, I get all these new folks are coming in and using our services, which we're thankful. But, you know, taxes are for infrastructure. You know, they're for, you know, good rates on electrical, you know, good roads, great sanitation. And people move to Winterville not because we have a great big multipurpose room or we have the best programs. I mean, we got Pitt County that offers so much, and they just started a wrecking park program. You know, we got the city of Greenville that are steps away, that have everything we could want. And again, you know, it was, I came last meeting, didn't know I was supposed to sign up first, but I learned my lesson. But I thought it was interesting to hear that Winterville has sixty-five percent homeowners? I mean, that's fabulous. I mean, I look at that sign, and you know, there used to be sign back there with two hands shaking, you know, because we're neighbors. I mean, and that's what makes this town great. You know, it is a slice of a good life. I've been slicing watermelon for over twenty years with my little watermelon hat and my watermelon shirt. You know, I go to the local church, Winterville Baptist, I shop at Food Line. I come downtown to eat at the eateries, you know. I go to Winterville Insurance. I mean, all of my sons went to Robinson, A.G. Cox, and South Central. I am involved in my community. I had been, I bought my house in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm almost got it paid off. Woo! Can we say yeah? But again, my sons can't even afford it no more. And again, that's a whole different thing, but please, 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 you know, consider bringing back. I mean, I'd rather see us than pay taxes to clean our streets, even with construction. I go help a neighbor change their storm door or some decking boards. And we don't even pick that up no more. So where is that going to end up? It's going to end up in the street. It's going to end up in somebody's yard that's not being maintained. So again, I just encourage the council, when it's time, to relook. And thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Maddie.
The Jesus.
The Jesus.
See. Hi, everybody. This is not what I was going to say, but Johnny, you brought something up, and jumped on too. My sister, eighty-six years old, passed also. And boy, I was screaming, oh, please come back, come back! Then I thought about all she went through. I go, no, Ree, don't come back. Don't come back. Stay. And I'm so happy for her. Now, this is what I wanted to say. When you make a complaint to this committee, you listen. It makes me happy that I've been talking about that Mill and Boyd Street. And I see that you are listening to me. It would have made me feel so bad if I keep talking about it. And you ignore me. But it's a good thing about Winterville. When you make a complaint, they do something about it. And guess what? Today, Channel Nine News came to my house, looked around at that intersection, and she says she's gonna put it on TV. I am so thankful to you all. Thank you for paying attention. Thank you, thank you, thank you! Oh, wait a minute. I got two minutes now? Do I?
A minute forty.
Forty minutes?
A minute and forty. Minute thirty-eight now. Thank you, Ms. Matt. All right. Council, is anything, before we move on, anybody would like to say anything about any of this discussions that was made? If not, we'll move on. Yes, sir.
Not only just because that Mr. Peterson called my name out, but only because I see the results in the neighborhood itself, that ones are leaving used items beside the street, and they begin to linger for a period, long period. It's hard to, it's hard for us to stay abreast on all of those that place those items on the street. So I don't know what we need to do. We need to think about something different than what we have in place. Maybe we have some sort of, put it on in the agenda to look at it and revisit it again. Because I do see a lot of furniture on the street that is hard for us to be abreast in every area.
The bulky item route has not changed.
It has not.
It has not changed. We are still picking up on the same frequency that we were previously. Construction debris is the route. And gentlemen, please, Cliff or Anthony, jump in. That's the route that changed. We're not picking that up unless by special appointment, for lack of a better word.
How can we identify the difference between if a homeowner placed something like that compared to ones that you hire to do the job?
The way we restructured everything, it doesn't matter if it's a homeowner or a contractor or who. We don't, much like, I mean, you know, you try to follow suit, to be fair. Every other municipality around us has cut out construction debris also, way before we had. So it's not that, you know, go ahead.
I was gonna say several never picked it up at all.
So we provide this service as long as we can. And, you know, construction debris is one of the services we have to pay to dispose of. So that takes a big hit on us when we have to haul it to the landfill. We're charged by the ton. And if you get a contractor to come remodel the bathroom, they charge you twenty-five thousand dollars. And in the town, they're getting paid, and then we have to pay to dispose of their mess. And we were running into that a lot. For the homeowners that do it themselves, I mean, we took that into consideration. It's not that we wanted to punish them or anything else. It's just trying to follow suit and do what's right and most beneficial with taxpayers' dollars, to the gentleman's point. We want to use those in places that we truly benefit from, if that makes sense.
And if I could clarify, just because it has been such a topic of discussion, and we understand changes are oftentimes of this nature are not taken kindly. The monthly fee that citizens are paying, that is just not for GFL. That encompasses every type of solid waste route run by the town in addition to GFL. So I would venture to say, though we did go up, that barely covers the GFL cost to the town, does not cover any of the solid waste pickup that town is providing.
Correct. I mean, so you pay, you know, the current fee, which is expensive, you know, I get it, we went up. But if you take what you get for that, that's every limb you put out, every pile of grass, bulky items you were talking about, you know, in the garbage and recycling, I mean, that's a lot of things we do for that small amount of money, in my opinion. Yes, it's a lot of money to some people, but if you look at what it would cost, you know, now that we've grown, I mean, it just takes a lot of money to keep these trucks on the road. And if, you know, like the tires, we were running every street in this town to pick up tires when, you know, the routes, most of the time, we wouldn't pick up five. But you still have to ride every street. That's two men running a truck, all that fuel, you know, the chances of them getting in an accident, just the risk wasn't worth the reward. So we're trying to cut costs where we can to be able to put that money towards infrastructure and towards better routes. Street sweeping comes out of the stormwater fee, you know, we've kept that separate. So the, you know, the grass truck, we've gone to a single truck, so we're used to it, took two guys. Now we bought a truck where one man can run that route. Just trying to cut back and do those things in a more efficient way with the technology we have nowadays. But that sixteen dollars for fifteen, whatever it is now, does not go, that's just not for GFL. And to you gentlemen about recycling, everybody I've spoken to, I think you were one of them. Once I explain what is truly recyclable nowadays, they kind of understand where we are. Because the five things, I think it's five things that you can truly recycle at RDS now. I mean, if I go to every can I've been to, I've been to probably over two thousand since we've started this. And I know of two in town that were recycling correct, because everybody wants to put a pizza box or an egg carton or, you know, all these things that they do not take anymore. And, I mean, it's just, we're getting penalized for that, which is why we went through this whole process. So I want people to understand that we're not trying to cut back on recycling. If you truly recycle what is allowed, it's very hard to fill up one of those containers. Now, maybe Amazon boxes, yes, but that's a whole different ballgame. Sir? People collect tires. I really don't know the answer for that. People have tires at their house. So, yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, when you change tires, like you said, I mean, yeah, you're supposed to dispose of them, but...
Those five items that you were speaking of, that you can recycle, you say it was five?
Yes, it's, so the way they explained it at the meeting, so we went to RDS and had this meeting before all this come about. Drink bottles, so they say a bottle where the top is smaller than the bottom is how they categorize it. So it would be drink bottles, two liters, detergent bottles, you know, stuff like that that have been rinsed, okay? You can recycle those. Drink, you know, water bottles, you can do newspapers, you can do brown cardboard that, you know, such as an Amazon box or so on and so forth. You can do food cans that have been rinsed out. And the, what's the last one? You can't do shredded paper anymore. We get that a lot. Most people put all their aluminum cans, you can still do those. But most people, a lot of the issue we have, people like to bag their recyclables. Once you put them in a bag and put that bag in a recycle can, it's considered contaminated. Pizza boxes are the number one thing we find in them. Dog food bags, plastic coat hangers, I guess everybody in the world's gone to plastic coat hangers. You cannot recycle those. We get in trouble for that all the time. So those things, just because it's plastic, extension cords, you know, phone chargers, I guess people think you can, you can't recycle that stuff. So just because it's plastic or paper or so on and so forth, you can't recycle it anymore. Yes, sir.
Can I get one point of clarification? When you said that we get penalized for, like, there's actually a financial fine?
Yeah, so right now, Pitt County is absorbing that cost, but they are fined by RDS for a contaminated load. So if the load goes to RDS and is dumped, they then have to put it back in the truck, haul it to the landfill where they dispose of it with the rest of the trash, and there is a fine for contamination.
But that will soon come to us as a town.
So they're saying. I don't have a date and a clarification on that, but John Dimmery has mentioned that it could possibly come to us.
I would just want to add, you know, going through the process, it's been a long, arduous process. But at one point, when the county, you know, ECVC was backing out, so there was a potential there where there was not going to be recycling in Pitt County. So RDS came in and took over something that, you know, nobody else wanted to do. The business that was doing that is not affiliated with the town. We have to, we have to, we did not select RDS to be our provider for recycling. That contract was done with the county, and the county basically didn't have a choice. They were the only ones who wanted to provide the service in the area. So given the fact that they were willing to come into a market that was getting abandoned, we are lucky to still have recycling. It's just not recycling as it used to be. And so the new company was very quick to let us know about contamination and the potential fines that would come along with it, and how much more stringent they were going to be than the prior company. So it's not just as simple as us making the decision not to want to recycle. It's us being kind of the face man for decisions that are made outside of our control. Thank you.
I would say that it is a lot of information to try to publish and get out to the public. We did send a, I believe it was a seven-page informational mailing that tried to address some of the solid waste changes. However, the reasons that went behind some of the decisions we made and talked about, it's hard to kind of encompass all of that in one document without overloading folks. So we've been talking about potentially publishing. So we've been talking about potentially publishing some additional information like we've talked about tonight, so that citizens at least have some idea of what the monthly cost encompasses, what it covers, what it doesn't cover, that kind of thing. So we do plan to try to get additional information published so that people have that to be able to reference.
Also, Terry, what about a recycling workshop for our citizens? Maybe having some type of informational session? Because again, when we send out information and people, they may read it, or they may throw it away, or what have you, but maybe we can have, you know, a 45-minute or just something where, in which citizens have questions and have a better understanding just to invite them out. I know that we have our town meeting, but this has been, as you know, something that has been a lot of questions and things of that nature. So maybe having our, you know, sanitation director and other staff to talk about what recycling is and why we are at the place that we are concerning Pitt County and recycling.
As counsel deems that helpful, we'll certainly be glad to do that. Solid waste changes are always painful, no matter the jurisdiction, no matter the situation. If that's something that we think offering the citizens can help, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That might be helpful.
Hold on, Ms. Councilwoman Hawkins.
I just wanted to add to what Dr. Harrell said, in terms of what we were just hearing from Public Works as well as Assistant Town Manager. From what we were hearing from Mr. McGuffin and our Assistant Town Manager Bowers, it seems as if the citizens are, their intention is to recycle egg cartons or dog food bags. They are trying to dispose of them in the proper way. If we have something educational where they can actually see a model of it, for example, rinsing out a can, one might throw it in, but it's not recyclable if it's not rinsed. So if we can show samples of it, then that gives us more of a better chance of getting the citizens to do it. But I think their intention is to do it the right way. They just need more education on how, what it looks like.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes. Do we need to place that into a motion, probably?
Yes, sir.
That will be helpful. To have a open meeting to the workshop, a workshop for our citizen on recycling.
Have a motion.
That's my motion.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moore, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, to have a workshop on recycling.
Just hold the moment. I think Mr. Gay may be working on a voting slide.
But while he's working on that slide, is, when do you, looking at possibly, is that something, Terry, you can?
I can certainly try to...
Because where we need to publish it, so you talking, what, November?
Either the end of October or first part of November. And when we say workshop, is this a formalized council meeting, or just an informative meeting for the public, like a town hall? Okay. Then I don't have to coordinate your all schedule necessarily to get that done. And so we will look and get the word out as to when that meeting will be handled. Thank you.
You ready, Willie?
Okay.
Counselor, if you call vote, please. Okay, all the votes are in unanimous for recycling workshop. Thank you. Thank you all. Our next up is consent agenda. Ready? Okay. Can you please vote on the consent agenda?
We need a motion.
A motion? Yeah, that's what I was waiting on.
I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second?
All right. I have a motion made by Dr. Harrell, second, who is it, who's second at? Okay, I'm sorry. Second by Councilwoman Smith. Any discussion before we go in? If none, please vote. Motion carry. Thank you. New business. Mill Street Town Preliminary Platte. Should be... I'm sorry. I had turned the page on y'all. I do apologize. I do apologize. Update information from NCDOT regarding Board, Board Street and Mill Street intersection. Anthony, I do apologize.
That's fine. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have before you a further discussion on adopting improvements for the all-way stop for intersection of Mill Street and Boyd Street. As you may recall, we discussed this at last month's meeting. I did not have complete feedback from NCDOT with regard to the intersection, and there were some concern about driveways and line of sight, vision triangles, and things of that nature, and wanted to see exactly what NCDOT's thoughts were. So in communicating with NCDOT about the matter, they indicated that, you know, an official response wouldn't come until the town took action. And so, but they did do a preliminary review, and they went out there and looked at it, and they said that they did not see any reason currently to install a four-way stop. However, it's at the council's discretion that if they, if the council so decided to adopt a resolution and request it, they would put it through unofficial review and official review, and then would give it consideration. But, you know, he felt like it was going to be, you know, not necessarily anything to keep them from doing it, but they needed an official resolution before an official review could occur.
Anthony, just for my clarification, did I hear you say that they stated in their preliminary review, DOT said that they did not see a need for it at this time?
They did not. They, if it was just solely upon NCDOT, they would not make any changes, probably unless citizens called them directly, since we have a council, council's getting it.
Right.
So it may be, you know, a different path for communication. And so, but his statement was that, you know, based as it is right now, a number of complaints, that they probably wouldn't make any changes. However, he did indicate, you know, there have been a lot of accidents there, 15 over the past year, five years, and so that he did see, you know, reason for concern and would, you know, probably listen to the wishes of the council. But, you know, he didn't say, he said we'll have to go through official review first.
So is that similar to the old tar process?
Yes, ma'am. Exact same process.
Thank you.
I have a question. During the last meeting prior to, we did not meet in July?
July.
July. The last meeting we had, and somebody go back in the minutes, I don't know, I can't, it appeared as if we were given the green light to get the all-way stop sign, and midst a discussion prior to, I think I made a motion for it, and then we were told to hold off to look for other options. But if I can recall, it was, it was okay to be installed. Somebody refresh my memory, I may have to go back in minutes. It wasn't being reviewed, it was going to be installed.
I believe they will not agree to install until we approve the resolution. We've not approved the resolution.
We did, I believe the motion was made to study and get further review and allow time for council members to talk to the people in the area, and also reassess the driveways and get feedback from citizens. That's what I recall.
If I may ask also, so, and again, I think you just said there had been 15?
My understanding has been 15 over five years. I think at our last meeting, it was 14.
Okay. One of them being major, so all the others were minor?
Class, I think he classified them as A, B, and C, the rollover being a C, and most of them were Bs.
Okay.
Also, he stated in his review that majority of the accidents were from two to six. So by the time school getting out and then people getting off work.
Was there any discussion of maybe putting in some other precautionary things, like, not rumble strips, but there are ways to, like, alert drivers of an upcoming intersection, intersection warning lights, something like that, to help maybe mediate that area without putting a four-way stop, which again, one of the concerns, and I expressed it and I'll express it, was that traffic may back up. We've seen some of that at the other recently installed four-way. And there are churches and driveways and things like, right there, that people will be stuck in their areas. So I don't know if that had been discussed, and another way to help perhaps prevent some incidents there.
So I asked him for alternatives, and he did not offer any.
I do have the section from last month's meeting in the minutes, which you all have adopted, that states the following, this isn't long. Town council expressed concerns regarding the intersection of Mill Street and Boyd Street. As a result, staff reached out to NCDOT and conveyed the concerns of the town council. NCDOT listened to the requests and reviewed the intersection to determine if improvements could be made. They determined that this intersection has had a high number of traffic accidents over the last five years. A resolution is requested by NCDOT. Once adopted, we will communicate the town council's vote for the improvements to DOT. Staff and council discussed the item, including the disadvantages, advantages and disadvantages of an all-way stop. Motion was made by Councilwoman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Robertson. We tabled the item until the September meeting and asked staff to review and provide additional information from NCDOT concerning the improvements for an all-way stop at the intersection of Mill Street and Boyd Street, and that motion carried three to two.
Thank you for reading that. And from what I hear is that DOT found that there was a lot of accidents, and is that...
Well, then it state that there was a high number over the last five years, but that did not, well, it didn't say one way or the other, whether they would install it or not. They just were asking for the resolution.
So I would, I know we, as a council, need to continue, you know, carrying on business, but I would like to state that we need to put safety first as opposed to hastiness. We need to, as Councilwoman Smith just said, well, maybe some suggestions, some warnings, some speed bumps, some something, because I drive through there every single day. I experience having to hesitate, it's poor visibility, and I would like to err on the side of safety as opposed to a fatality, and then we coming back to the drawing board. We don't want traffic backed up, but we want safety, and that is all that I am speaking for. And so if I need to make a motion that we look into safety, somebody please guide me. That's what, that's what I'm going to do. Boyd and Mill need some safety measures put in that area.
So the resolution in the agenda packet is for the four-way stop. That's not one, a motion that you want to make, or, you know, if that's not what you want in the resolution, we can modify that resolution.
Could we perhaps do that, modify the resolution and request additional safety measures to see if that would impede or help with it? And then if we had to down the road, if we really saw a need, we could always put more up. I just don't see us putting up a four-way stop at the request of the DOT and their fund, and then if it doesn't work out and traffic is backed up and people can't get out of driveways, and now people are, oftentimes that leads to even more fender benders because traffic is backed up. We could always, maybe then we could go back and say, okay, we're still having collisions, maybe a four-way stop would be the next step. I don't, that's just a recommendation.
And so for clarity, if we vote on a resolution and it doesn't pass, that, then we have to start from the beginning and reaching out to DOT.
No, y'all can, you could modify, and we can modify the resolution to state what the council's actions are tonight. So if you wanted it to, you know, if you wanted that resolution to state, you know, potential exploration of rumble strips or, you know, other, you know, attention measures first, then a four-way stop. If it doesn't pass that review, you could put it in a, some sort of synchronization. But as is written right now, they're only going to look at the four-way stop.
Because that's the way it's written.
Right. So you're going to make that in the form of a motion? I'm sorry.
I guess I'm probably going to echo what Anthony just said. The resolution is prepared, is the council's resolution to say we're interested in an all-way stop. If the council thinks that that's not the proper first step, this resolution can be amended to request whichever cautionary device you think would be best. So it's not, it's not in stone. We can amend this to whatever y'all think would be the better solution to the, to the problem there.
Does, do those amendments or those measures have to be specific? Do we have to name them with specificity right now? For example, flashing lights? For example, warnings? Do we have to name that now because we'd have to look in to get the specific?
I would think that if you make it a generalized statement, then that is everything up to and including a four-way stop, you may get something you don't want, that the majority of council doesn't want. Anthony, you've been talking to DOT, I don't want to...
I mean, their indication to me, not to speak for them, I mean, their official position is going to be, once they get a resolution, that's what they'll look at. But, you know, they've been easy to work with recently as far as, you know, what the town's requested.
Well, I'm hearing that we can make a motion to amend this resolution and have a send. Can I do that?
Yeah, you could, you could, you could make a motion to either add to what's here or remove the four-way stop sign and go with something else.
So I would like to make a motion to remove the statement of the four-way stop sign, and in lieu of that, put other precautionary features, including a rumble strip and intersection warning sign with flashing light.
I second. If you were finished making the motion.
May I, one minute, ask for clarification on the motion again?
Okay.
Do you mind restating that? So to amend the current resolution, removing the four-way stop request, and in lieu of that, to request rumble strips from both directions approaching the intersection, intersection caution signs with flashing lights.
Can I ask a question while we're doing it? With the motion, rumble strips, flashing lights, do we put in the motion if, in fact, that doesn't alleviate or decrease the risk that we will revisit, or we just revisit later?
I think you would, this is just me, but I think you would just bring it back. If they, if they add something and you look at it six months or a year down the road and said, that's just not enough, we would just come back and talk about it again.
Thank you.
I know time, time matters, but one good thing about, you know, but all of these measures, they're, you know, the flashing lights might be a little, might be a cost issue for DOT, we'll have to find that out. However, aside from that, you know, they're pretty temporary measures. It's not, it's not like putting up a signalized intersection or things of that nature. So I feel like, you know, a four-way stop could come back down pretty easy, or, you know, you know, things of that nature. They're pretty reversible, I guess, is what I'm saying, until you figure out exactly.
So we have a motion on the floor, maybe by Councilwoman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Hawkins, to amend, right? Isn't that right?
Yes, to amend the resolution.
To amend the resolution to remove the four-way stop sign.
And then I guess, if I could, we're amending the resolution, but we're also adopting, you know, we're, we adopt the resolution as amended, I suppose.
Adopt the resolution. Adopt the resolution as amended.
Yeah.
With the addition of rumble script, rumble strips, um, flashing signals.
Intersection warning signs with flashing lights.
Intersection warning signs. There was anything else I missed? Okay.
If I could, no, 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 I just wanna say, um, since Dawn's not here, I wanna try to capture it and I know Keen's helping me, but we may draft this and get it out to you all to make sure it states what your intentions were, if that's all right.
Yes. Any other questions before we vote? If none, please vote by using your clicker, please. Uh, motion carried. Thank you, thank you, council for good conversation. Everybody working together on that. All right, now, do I turn the page now?
You do turn the page.
New business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see. So the town has received a preliminary plat. I have actually given you guys a, an eleven-by-seventeen copy of the site plan in front of you. It's a little busy on the screen, so I thought it'd be, it'd be helpful to just kinda see the layout in front of you. Um, again, we have received a preliminary plat for Mill Street Towns. Uh, the applicant is River and Associates for this. This is between Highway eleven and Mill Street, uh, just south of the eleven at Main Town Home Development, uh, right on Main Street. Um, it's an eleven-point-five-two acre site that is zoned multifamily residential. The multifamily residential zoning was approved back in 2021. This is again, a single-family attached development. Single-family attached means each lot will, each unit will have its own lot. So each, uh, unit could actually be owned by an individual person. Um, rather than a, a multifamily development would be on one single lot. Um, they received their, uh, special use permit in 2022 for a town home development through the Board of Adjustment, meeting all the special criteria uh, for a, uh, attached town home development. The special use permit was for up to a hundred and thirty-eight units. Uh, the design that you see in front of you is for ninety-three single-family attached units. This includes two driveways, um, sorry, one on Mill Street and one on Highway eleven. Um, the one on Highway eleven will actually be built and included once Phase Two is being developed. Highway eleven, uh, will be constructed alongside Mill Street, um, Mill Street Towns and, hold on, sorry. Um, eleven at Main, uh, to, to have highway, uh, access. This is a site and aerial of the property that we are, uh, reviewing tonight. Again, eleven at Main, um, is just above this property, Highway eleven, and then Mill Street right here. This is a zoomed-in image. And we are going to, uh, go to the, the page that you have in front of you. This is the layout of Mill Street Towns or the site plan. Again, you have a, a single street that comes off of Mill Street and will continue all the way towards Highway eleven. Um, you also have a street stubbed to the south for future growth. Um, and some, some units, uh, going down that street as well. Again, the first, uh, thing that we review is to, to ensure that if a development is over thirty lots, that they will have at least two means of access, um, to the site. Again, this will have one on Highway eleven and Mill Street. You'll have a third access potentially to the south, once the southern piece of property is developed. Um, the applicant has noted on the plat that the Highway eleven turn-in will be completed prior to the second phase being developed. Planning and zoning board did review this at their August meeting and recommended approval six to one. Mill Street Towns has also been reviewed by the Winterfield Technical Review Committee, or as we, uh, more commonly call it the TRC. Um, as reviewed, uh, and with revisions, what is presented tonight, this preliminary plat has been approved by the TRC for town compliance. Staff does recommend approval of Mill Street Towns as the development meets the standards for the town of Winterfield and all of our development guidelines. Uh, we have the applicant here, if there are any questions of them as well. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer it.
So I'm just, is two phases or three phases?
They are proposing two phases in this development, yes, sir.
See phase one and then I see phase. Uh, y'all have any questions? Anybody have any questions? And the retention pond, is it closer to Highway eleven, correct?
So they are showing their stormwater infrastructure in this area, um, right here, kinda to the southwest of, of the lot.
And then the other question, is, is a buffer between the, the two, uh, eleven and Maine, is it?
So there is a buffer between the single-family residential
Uh-huh.
and, uh, the single-family attached. Um, since it's the same product, there is no required buffer between, uh, single-family attached and single-family attached to the north, um, for, for, um, eleven at Maine.
Okay, but the backing end, it is a.
There, there is one against the two single-family residential homes, correct?
What is that, is that buffer fence, is it buffer trees?
It is a ten-foot vegetated buffer. There is a fence option in the zoning ordinance that they can add and, a fence as well. Um, but it requires a ten-foot wide vegetated, uh, vegetated buffer.
Um, is it a berm or?
No, it would be, it would be trees, but just vegetation, that's great.
What is property would be HOA or?
They, they would have to have an HOA, um, for this project, yes, sir.
And can you remind me, like, what parking requirements and?
Yes, so, single-family attached requires two parking spots per unit. So each of these lots will have at least two parking spaces. Um, they are proposing a garage and a driveway. Um, should actually probably get more than that out of it because if you look, the setback is twenty foot to the right-of-way and then an additional sixteen foot before you actually get to the curb. So that's a, it'd be twenty-six foot driveway. So it, it'd be a fairly large driveway, especially when you consider something like eleven at Maine.
Is there any additional, are, are there any additional areas, like visitor parking? I know eleven in Maine has some of that. And the reason I ask is because, like, through the south, um, South Point, the townhomes over there going into Greenville, going the back way to Aldy or whatever, like, there's a lot of cars parked on streets and things like that and that's often a concern.
Right.
And so I, I know that eleven in Maine has some additional parking, like for visitor and stuff like that. Is there anything?
They have added eight spaces right here. Um, I don't, if you can kinda zoom into just north of, um, this street right here, there are seven or eight spaces.
And that's the one area for the entire?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so I have a question, I have a few questions. When and if, or if this plat is approved, um, I guess the developers will have a timeframe when they start building. I'm concerned about infrastructure. I'm concerned about what we just spoke about in terms of recycling and trash and all the public works that we are concerned about in terms of our citizens right now. And we're bringing in more and more. And it, it, it is happening so fast. And I know before we talked about, you know, different, uh, you know, street lights and, and stop signs, stuff happening fast. This, this is happening so fast, we can't keep up or sustain what we have now. So that is my concern that I just wanted to voice. Um, they will, you know, if it gets approved, they'll start building. Uh, but there's other things that are in the works to be built that, that is taking years and years. Uh, but, but structures such as this, developers come in and it, it, for me, is, it's a lot.
Well, I, I want to, uh, elaborate a little bit on what, uh, Councilwoman, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, yeah. Uh, my thought was, uh, the street itself. And like she said, I, I have noticed and I have seen a lot that when they double park, uh, you don't have much space even for emergency vehicles to go through. Uh, I, I'm concerned about the width and the wa, the width of the street. Make sure that it is, uh, it can be, uh, capable to be used toward emergency. Enough room that people can, you know, uh, travel east and west, south or north, with, whatever way they are going. Uh, that's very important, you know? Uh, the sides of the street, you know, to me, will be a great concern. Also, uh, the drainage, I, I do believe that the pond will help us out with that. With HOA, you know how that works sometime. Uh, but still, uh, it, it can be workable. It can, it, it can operate in a way that it could actually, uh, it benefit for the, the citizen or for the community in that area. I just hope and pray that it keep, upkeep. And, and, you know, I know that HOA, once they comes in, there are certain things that the town is not allowed to do, are responsible for, is that correct?
We don't enforce the covenants through the HOA. All of our ability to enforce remains intact. But sometimes people will call wanting us to enforce provisions of the covenants that are regulated by the homeowners association and we don't do that. Um, I, I was just gonna say, parking on both sides of streets, regardless of their width, even when they're built to town standard, make it inherently difficult in a lot of these neighborhoods that currently exist today for emergency vehicles to get through. And I'm afraid that is something that council's gonna have to take a look at town-wide because I could point to probably fifteen places right now where it would be problematic if a fire truck needed to get through there to somebody's house.
Well, you know, my concern right now, you, I, we can't go back and undo what already has been done. You know, we talking about paths forward, you know? And, and path forward is new development. Nothing against you guys, I just wanna let you know. My concern, and who I represent, very important, even myself and my family, you know? And so it's a concern to me about the width of the street to make sure that we have enough space to have parking. And you know, they're gonna double park, I mean, cause these units gonna be facing one another. Even the driveway probably be facing one another. So, uh, that's a concern for me, great concern.
Well, I, I think we can go back and look at, uh, as Terry spoke a while ago, as a council, we can go back and look at some of these, uh, subdivisions that we do have out here, uh, as far as parking is concerned. But going forward, yeah, we need to. But my concern is, uh, one of my concern, I was gonna ask about is, what type of fronting? Can somebody answer that? Or is that laid on down the road, what type of, you know, siding or?
The facade of the.
The exterior, exterior, yeah.
We have the intended developers here, but to my knowledge, I don't think the builders are here, is that correct? So, so there would not be a expected facade yet, is that correct?
That, that would come a little later.
Okay, that's why I wanted, I was just kinda curious, you know, are they all, uh, all gonna look the same? When I go looking for somebody, I'm at the wrong house. I was just asking that question.
Yes, sir.
All right. Hardy plank or?
I will say, we, we, I mean, I personally, I think most of us would prefer that it is something that is aesthetically pleasing and will be durable and, and something that will be a benefit to our community for a long time to come. Um, so as we look at those exterior coverings and, and as we look at some of these things, I, I, I hope that that would be considered and kept in mind.
All right, thank you, that's what I was trying to get at.
My other question would be, is, do we know it's, it's going to be upstairs or just downstairs? Or is it gonna be multiple units, right? We don't know yet.
It, uh, the applicant, uh, pointed as a two-story units.
Townhomes usually are two-story or more.
Or more. Any other questions for Stephen or the, uh, developer that's here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh, any other questions, anybody have any other questions?
So this is a preliminary and, and as they move forward, further in the process, will have more information? Will there be another time to, to recommend or approve, for instance, exterior coverings and things like that?
Yeah, the next step would be construction drawings, which is just a staff-level approval. And then, um, after construction drawings, then final plat and them constructing it. So there will not be a time where we review, um, facade elements for single-family attached.
Stephen, we do not have design standards at this time.
We do have design standards for multifamily and, um, single-family attached, that is not, that is, sorry, it can't be single-family attached for multifamily. So townhomes, if this was on one lot, then we would have, um, uh, requirements for multifamily developments. Yes.
I do think going through this process with eleven at Maine and now with Mill Street Towns, it has certainly brought up some things that we need to take a look at in our ordinance.
So we need to revisit it?
I, I don't know that you can hold Mill Street Towns to it, but we definitely have some things that we've discussed internally that we will probably be.
And just to clarify, we did have a huge, um, uh, redo of our ordinance from, um, the previous, uh, eleven at Maine. So from eleven at Maine, that's where the multifamily design standards came into place.
But that would not apply to single fam?
Single-family or single-family attached. We'd have to look into state statute to see, uh, what could apply to single-family and single-family attached. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Hawkins, you have something? All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, we ain't voting.
You gotta vote.
I'm looking around, but ain't nobody.
Yes, the staff, staff has made their presentation, so now it's.
And so, and the staff recommended their approval and, and that was what the planning and zoning board.
Right.
And it meets all of our current.
And did we, did we get your feedback on the reason why that one, uh, voted against?
No, we did not.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we recommend their approval, um, as proposed by staff as it meets the Winnebago ordinances and standards.
Okay, out of motion, I have a second.
Second.
A second, uh, motion made by Councilwoman Smith to accept the, uh, Mill Street Town preliminary fact, uh, and second by Council, Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell. All in favor? Click your clicker. Motion carry three to one. The one vote is, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Ms. Hawkins. So the motion carry three, one, thank you all. Awarded contract for engineering service, uh, line service, line inventory project, is it? Anthony?
Yes.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor and members of the council. Um, so tonight, uh, before you, and this item is, um, award of contract for engineering firm to help this town of Winnebago with our lead service line inventory. Um, this advertisement was ran in the Daily Reflector on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. This project, um, basically is a project where the town is required by, uh, federal regu- regulatory agencies to identify any lead and copper service lines that may be on the town's water system that, um, provide water to our residents. And so this is a mandatory project. Um, they, we went through the RFQ process. We have a scoring system that's presented to you in your agenda abstract. Um, again, this is a federal mandate and, um, we need to start reporting as soon as October. Um, this project will be funded, we, with funds from DEQ, NCDQ is roughly a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And, um, through the process, we received communication from three engineering firms, the Wooten Company and Harvard Engineering, um, decided not to bid on this or provide quotes, excuse me, on this, uh, for qualifications. And so we are recommending, um, award of the contract to Rivers and Associates for the study.
Okay, all right. Any questions, uh, Mr. Bowers? If none, what is the pleasure of this board?
I move that we award the contract for the study to River and Associate, Associates as recommended.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell to award the contract to Rivers and Associates. Any questions before we vote? If none, please click your clicker. Motion carry four zero. Thank you, Anthony. Next up is, uh, NCDQ, uh, resolution for, uh, funding for water line replacements.
Uh, yes, tonight before, we have before you, um, an application for funding. Uh, we're trying to receive, uh, funding from DEQ to replace, uh, several water lines throughout town. These lines are old, dilapidated. They've been on the town's, uh, capstone improvement program for many, many, many years. Um, we have, um, the next agenda item is our capital improvements program, which will go with the application. But what you'll see is we've identified areas of town that we feel like will qualify for funding through DEQ. And not every, not all of our projects are eligible for funding through them. If it's a project that's considered expansion, um, then they're not gonna, um, work with us. This was, is typically, um, you know, low interest loan. And we have several that are zero percent interest. And we also have at times received five hundred thousand dollars in debt forgiveness associated with these, these loans. So ideally, you know, we'll certainly try to, uh, get the, the five hundred thousand, it's not a guarantee. But, uh, historically, we have received that when we received these applications. So, um, when we submitted these applications, when they were funded, there have been times when we've submitted applications since I've been in this position that, um, they were not funded. And so we, we, we put together a different package this time, tried to get one that would score a little bit higher. And so what we had, there were, there were, uh, one, two, six items, um, basically totaling two million one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, these are, uh, a static mixer for the water tank, water line replacements for Myrtle Street, Tyson Street, Blunt Street and Jones Street. And we also have scattered throughout town, two-inch iron lines that would need to be replaced as well. And so this is, uh, just a resolution authorizing, uh, staff to submit the application on behalf of the town.
Thank you. So really it's like six different?
Water lines. Actually, it's more than that.
More than that, but, yeah, but what you identify here on this paper, like.
These are aged lines that are, as you may recall, last year, the local government commission sent the town, uh, notification about our assets depreciating, um, the useful life of our water system. While we've done some very difficult work to get the more accurate number on that, um, it ha- is a good indicator of the aging of our system and the fact that our system is, is, needs to be, uh, maintained at a little bit higher level. So this would, this would allow the town to replace several old lines.
Okay, all right, thank you. What's, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution for the funding of the water line replacement through NCDQ.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilwoman Smith. Any discussion? If none, please vote the clicker. Motion carry, thank you, Anthony, stay up there.
Yep. Last one. Um, so the next item is a water fund capital improvements program. Um, this is a ten-year plan. We've, um, historically adopted this, um, Rivers and Associates did a CIP, uh, study for us, uh, back in twenty-twenty. Um, we also re-updated that in twenty-twenty-two when we went through a similar application process with DEQ that was not funded. So what we're doing now, we went through our capital improvements program, updated the numbers on it with engineer estimates to make it more current and more, um, reasonable. And we also took off any projects that had been processed over the course of the two years, as well as any new, identified any new projects that are coming down the pipe. So with that being said, I can walk the, walk you through each one of those projects. Um, it is in your agenda packet. However, you know, the grand total of that is sixteen million one hundred and forty-one thousand. So, um, if, um, please note though, um, you know, this is, the, the CIP is a suggestion. Um, it can change based on funding, uh, availability and needs as the town changes and grows and things, um, don't go exactly as planned this time. So we have to, you know, uh, move on the fly a little bit and, and rearrange. But this, it's not a guarantee that the dates or the years that the projects are listed to start on the CIP. It's, it's not a guarantee that that's when it's gonna happen, it is a goal. And, um, but certainly we'll, um, have to take that into consideration along with other operational needs at the time.
Okay, what's the pleasure forward?
I move that we, um, allow staff to adopt a water fund capital improvements program.
Again.
And a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell to adopt the approval of the capital. Yeah, capital improvement program. Any discussion? If none, please use your clicker to vote. Motion carry four zero. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, uh, is a follow-up for the support needed. Needed huge, uh, tree safety concern, Ms. Hawkins.
Yes, I brought this, um.
Be Councilwoman Hawkins, I'm sorry.
I brought this concern before the council back in July. Um, in terms of the support needed to actually, uh, look at unsafe trees that are in, within Winnebago. Um, I brought up, uh, I brought up through, um, our policies, excuse me. I brought up through our board policies that we did have a tree board, um, in the past. And my question was, um, I didn't know why it was deactivated or why it's not active at this time. Um, Mayor Hines suggested that I reach out to Pitt County's Alboratorium, um, to find out and, you know, see if they could give me some more information in terms of who, uh, could address unsafe trees. Um, and I spoke to two different people at two separate times. There is no such program, there is no such support. Um, the people I spoke to said that there is, um, trees that can be trimmed if they are on electric lines or falling in ditches. This is not what I'm bringing up. I'm bringing up the need for support for homeowners, um, who are on a fixed budget, who cannot afford a thousands of dollars to trim their trees, to maintain them. I know we spoke about, um, if someone goes onto a homeowner's property, um, they could damage lines. Um, and again, those who may be listening to me via, uh, YouTube, uh, or through word of mouth, I have asked them to come out, I've asked them to submit some, uh, letters in which I have and I can provide at a later date. I'm coming from the hospital seeing my mother. But, um, I see that we do have, we did have a tree board. And what I am asking tonight is that the council, um, just have conversation, uh, in terms of what is needed. Um, again, there are many homeowners who are elderly and/or economically challenged, who do not have thousands of dollars to get trees cut, dead trees, limbs cut, uh, 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 um, diseased trees. What can we as a town council do? And I'm gonna ear to saying, people care how much you know when they know how much you care. So if we could have some discussion about the trees.
If I may, and when we had the budget, we approved funding to several, um, non-town agencies, one of them being an organization that does that, correct? I cannot remember the name.
Not that does tree.
Not that, but that helps individuals with some emerg- is it the emergency home repair?
It's urgent repair.
Urgent repair?
For urgent repair homes.
Okay, so the, so we have given some funds to the urgent repair of homes for individuals who may need assistance.
We do have a program, yes.
We do have, okay.
It, it was my understanding that that program, um, is for repairs inside of the home.
To the home itself.
To the home itself, not trees on the outside.
That's correct.
So it was home repairs to the home.
Right.
And not, uh, assistance or, and, and again, in the past, I brought up maybe some volunteers, somebody. I, I would hate to think of a fatality, um, and this not be brought up. In our, um, previous tropical storm, not right here in town, but in and out of North Carolina, Virginia and up and down the East Coast, there was at least seven trees that went into homes. And so I'm bringing this forward again, and I hope that we can do something or e- or either, uh, reactivate the tree board because it's essential.
If I may, I did hand out to you all the excerpt from our code of ordinances that references the makeup and purpose of the tree board. And I did highlight for your reference that purpose. That tree board has not been really in place. I've been here fifteen years and it was on its way to being deactive when I first started. The majority of what that board did was related to beautification and planting trees and obtaining grants. And I think, um, the previous manager knew a lot about that kind of thing. And there was a lot of money at that time that you could apply for and get for the purpose of planting trees. Funds went by the wayside. The purpose of the tree board, uh, primarily for beautification, et cetera, waned. Therefore, the board became inactive. You will see, uh, that it does state, lost my, oh, here it is, that the duties and responsibilities, if you go on page two, is to develop a comprehensive tree plan. Uh, and it shall be the responsibility of the board to develop this plan for the care, preservation, pruning, planting, replanting, removal or disposition of trees and shrubs in parks, along streets and in public areas, so on public property. Um, I don't think, and I would ask Keen to, to weigh in, but I don't think currently we have any legal authority to go on private property in country.
But, well, that's correct. I mean, our inherited authority ends at, at the, the boundary of the public property. We, we would have to have permission to go on private property and, and, and do work there. So that's just a legal area we would, we'd have to maneuver through and figure out whether or not there's, uh, sufficient safeguards against liability, you know? Again, if you're, you're cutting something on somebody's property, I, I defer to Cliff and, and, and the town forces to whether or not we actually have the ability with town forces to cut the trees. If we did, then if there was any damage to private property, we would be liable for that damage. If we hired somebody, then of course, their insurance would cover it. But, um, I can only assume that, you know, the higher end, I mean, I, I don't know what somebody would charge to cut down the tree. It would depend on the size of the tree and where it was located.
The electric department is usually primarily responsible for, uh, maintaining, pruning, cutting back trees that are in close proximity or on our electric infrastructure. So any trees deemed dangerous to, uh, and Ron, if I get anything misstated, please tell me. Uh, but that would be in danger of harming the electric infrastructure. Uh, the electric department would handle. But aside from that, any tree bush, et cetera, that would impede the view of someone, uh, traveling the streets and highways through Winnebago, um, that is pretty much where our authority currently is.
And, and thank you for explaining that. And I would say with my conversation with many who have actually sent in many things about huge scary trees that are leaning, um, I don't think they would have a issue with giving permission and what the liabilities would be. If they hit homeowner and they have given permission and something happens, they are given permission, but they are actually frightened about trees. Um, and again, those that may be listening, I, I encourage them to come to these council meetings and speak to what they need. Um, and if we have our capability, we have a capacity to at least look at the trees and assess them when they're leaning or they're just totally huge, what can we do? Or do we just say, that's not, you know, not something for us to look at?
You made a comment there about having the capacity, that would be my next concern. Even if somebody were to give us permission, once we start using tax dollars to take care of people's personal property, we have gone down a very slippery slope. We cannot afford to maintain individuals' personal property. Um, as a town, as an entity, where do you then draw a line? We do this one, but then we can't do that one. That would be a very, that would be very difficult. Um, it's a, I would be hesitant to asset of our, of our staff and of our taxpayers in the community. Um, I would think that we could go back to, and I, I understand your, some people's concerns if they don't have the funds, um, to maintain the home that they own. But perhaps this is where, um, civic organizations, churches, institutes of God, um, community outreach places, things like that might be a, a resource because they just don't feel that the town can utilize tax dollars to take care of. to take care of individuals' personal property.
I would say that the townspeople are at the top of the organization. I would say that we have tax dollars because they are in of itself being paid from the people. That's what I would say. Uh, us discussing the tree board, um, I brought that up because it was in the ordinance. And until Attorney Keen, uh, just, um, shared or made clarified to me that, um, it's public areas, then I then delved into if a homeowner wants it. Of course, I don't want, um, tax dollars to go out just willy-nilly to anyone. But if it's safety, I feel like as a town, we could at least come out and assess. And again, the townspeople are at the top of the organization and I'm speaking on their behalf.
Yes, I agree. Our fiduciary duty is to the greater benefit of the majority of our constituents.
The townspeople are at the top of the organization.
Let me, uh, step in here. Basically, as far as the tree board, I'm just trying to get to the tree board thing right now. Councilwoman Hawkins is, so are you wanting us to look back at the tree board itself? I'm, I'm just asking that question.
Absolutely, because while Attorney Keen just said it's, um, for parks and streets and, and if they can come out and assess. If we can get a board reactivated to at least assess, you know, I don't think that there's no harm in doing that. And it would alleviate or answer some questions to homeowners. I mean, yeah, so I think we need a tree board. It, it's hurricanes, it, it's, it's inclement weather. And, uh, while some homeowners cannot afford to get it done, it doesn't mean that they should be put in a risk for their life and limb.
If I may, the tree board would be comprised of volunteers. And unless you have volunteers that have specific knowledge in arborism, I'm not exactly sure of the term, but of trees specifically, it would put quite a daunting task on them to advise as a volunteer, citizens, one way or another, with respect to trees on their property. I would be concerned about, uh, what we'd be asking them to do. Uh, Keen, I don't know if I'm saying that adequately or not, but...
I understand. Um, I, I, I think the original purpose, or maybe one of the original purposes for the tree board was for aesthetic purposes and to look at, you know, where trees could be planted in, you know, help the looks of the town. Uh, th- this would be, of course, um, and, and, and that's something that I think people objectively, uh, could, could make a call on where's the better places to place trees and plant trees. But when you're looking at safety factors, you probably need somebody with a little bit more of a sort of a, a technical background. And, and, um, I guess it would depend on who you would, who you'd be able to find as a volunteer to, to reconstitute your tree board, whether or not you have that experience.
And if they didn't have that experience, I, I just trying to figure out what then we do with it.
And I understand, and I'm, you know.
And I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Absolutely, and I, and I'm okay with the, this discussion because it's productive struggle. And it's okay because I'm, I'm speaking for what is needed. Oh, and I know we have formalities. And with reading, it says pruning, it says planting, it says replanting, it says removal, or disposition of trees and shrubs. It says in parks, streets, and in other public areas. So then what I'm saying is it encompassed removal. It encompassed all of these different things, be it public. So perhaps there is people now that, that are, uh, educated on this type of area. I'm gonna make a motion and it's okay if it's voted down. That, that is a trend, but I'm gonna keep on doing what I need to do.
Okay, you have that, yes ma'am.
So I make a motion that the town council, uh, looks into reactivating a tree board, um, with given time, uh, for me to reach out to see who may want to volunteer for that. That is my motion.
Okay. Have a motion on the floor by council. Councilwoman Hawkins, do I have a second?
Got a question.
Give me a second.
For your, for a question?
All right, 'cause I have a motion right now. Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hawkins. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Councilwoman Hawkins, can you restate your motion?
I make a motion that the council approves the reactivation or the, the, I make a motion that the town council approves looking into the reactivation of a tree board. I can't, yeah, that, that's my motion with, um, in lieu of me and/or the council launching out or in the next 30 days finding volunteers for the tree board.
So your, your motion is, is to reestablish? It was one, so reestablish, correct?
To reestablish it, but we don't have the volunteers, so that's...
Still, it's, it's kind of, 'cause it was there before, so it's reestablished. It ain't something new, it's just reestablished, correct? Is that correct, turn?
Uh, uh, it sounds like we're trying to reform or reconstitute the, the tree board.
Uh-huh.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second now, question.
My question is, uh, when you said, when you stated, uh, or requesting to, um, go back to the original tree board type, um, ordinance or responsibility that we'll put in place? Is, is that's what you're asking? I mean, is that is what?
That is a good question.
If that is your request, that's my question, because...
That is a good question. And, and I don't think that the tree board should be identical in nature because this is, um, just for public parks, streets. However, we need, maybe it can be amended when it's reactivated for someone to assess the trees. Somebody needs to look at these trees. And if a tree board has to do it with volunteers, then that is what I'm asking for.
So I, I have a, um, I guess question and comment?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so for the tree board, just the reactivation, um, yes. However, when I'm looking at the comprehensive tr- uh, town tree plan, it talks about public areas. And so just for Councilwoman Hawkins, so you'll know when it talks about public areas, it doesn't say anything about private to Councilwoman Ha- um, Councilwoman Smith's point? So again, this is a statute for the board, correct, town, um?
This is, this is, um, uh, in your code of ordinances.
Okay, the ordinance, right. So this is just public. So it doesn't mean that we would, that it, it would go on private property, but we're just wanting to get the board reactivated to see what will happen?
Yes, yes, yes ma'am. And even once it's reestablished, perhaps those that are on the board with knowledge can then utilize their resources and/or to reach out other, to other entities. But I believe that we need a tree board here in Winneville. And that was my motion made, to reestablish it.
All right, have the motion on the floor. Any more discussion? If no discussion, please.
I do, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not trying to be difficult in any way, shape, or form. I just need to understand the purpose of the tree board moving forward so that when we advertise for volunteers, we can then explain to them what the purpose of their, what they're signing up for and how moving forward may differ from what is currently stated in the, in the code of ordinances. I just need to try to understand what that is so that like our other volunteer boards and commissions, we can support them. Now, I would also say that we do provide staff support to our other boards. And I don't know what that looks like here, particularly if we're talking about future private property activity.
Well, at this time, we have no one, no tree board. There is nobody assessing trees, be it public, be, who, who, do we have? Oh, let me reframe my question. Do we have any staff assessing trees on the street? What does it say?
Yes.
On the...
Street, yes.
On the streets, in the parks, and in other public areas?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, um, then I'm going to, I, I, we, okay, we have staff doing that.
Yes.
So what would be, and how often do they do it? We have them doing it, how often do they do it?
Well, thank you for talking, and of, of course, I don't think there's any regular schedule. But certainly when we get into hurricane season, uh, staff will go and they'll look at our properties and they'll look for weak points, dead trees, trees that look like they need, uh, care and assistance. The electric department goes in and they trims back, they trim back the trees uh, to try to keep them off the lines. In the parks, the maintenance staff consistently looks at, uh, the vegetation to see if it's healthy. And then it discuss, you know, if something needs to be done, they've been discussed with public works, uh, if needed, or electric if needed, if trees need to be removed, replaced, et cetera. So it's a collective ongoing, uh, team, I would say, that manages trees and all vegetation on our public properties. Hope that answered your question?
It did. It answered my question. I'm gonna keep my motion. I'm looking at A, I'm looking at B for tree inventory, I'm looking at C. C says other requested work. I'm gonna keep my motion the way it is and I understand, but I'm just advocating for what is needed.
All right, if none, uh, everybody's, uh, please, uh, grab their clicker and vote on the motion, please. Your motion failed, uh, three, two. And, um, Ms. Hawkins, um, the reason I voted that because as far as the, uh, tree board, I'm, like, I'm looking at what the tree board stands for. I've done, and the reason I said it, 'cause I have done some logging. And it's very expensive to go on property, private property, and the insurance that you gotta carry to go on private property is very expensive. Um, because even though the homeowner gives you right and they sign a waiver, soon, you know this probably, if that tree falls and they have signed that waiver, they still want to sue you. You know, uh, we've been through that before. I mean, that's the only reason. But as far as the tree board, I have no problem. But if we're gonna try to amend it, but you gotta have somebody that know what they're doing when looking at these trees, you know, 'cause the diseased trees and everything else, you would need somebody that crews timber. And I, I don't know, we have that many people here in town that cruise timber, you know, to be honest with you. But, uh, this tree board...
Okay, it is okay.
Yes, ma'am.
It is okay.
But I was just trying to share my answer, the reason I voted that way, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
And one other, one other help, helpful hint that, uh, they, well, uh, a helpful information they probably can look at, homeowners, uh, sometime your homeowner insurance will assist if they feel like if your home is in, uh, danger, uh, um, and especially so many feet close to your home. Uh, a lot of your homeowner insurance will assist into helping you with, um, to, uh, secure that, that tree or take it down or whatever need to be done.
Yes, sir, and this is done with a deductible that many cannot afford. But I will move right along and glad we went through the process.
Uh, well, next up, you have, uh, update requests on a multi-purpose center.
I think Diane has a quick update. If that's all right?
Yes. Good evening. Um, so just to give y'all a quick update, we have been working closely with McGill and Associates, um, and just talking with them, we usually talk to them every couple of days. We are moving, um, pretty steadily. And right now, after the public, um, public involvement that we had for the, at the watermelon festival, we are working on getting a list of focus groups together to give to them. Um, that also includes town council as well. So that's our next step.
When, now, you planning on taking that next step?
We're working on it right now.
No date?
We have to give that to the list. Once we get the list to them, we will talk with them and work on different dates that work with everybody, especially with, or especially with the town council. That way, it works for your schedule.
So hopefully we'll get some dates on our next meeting, hopefully.
Hopefully very soon.
Hopefully.
Sooner than later.
I'm gonna say Diane, in full disclosure, she's waiting on me.
Okay.
And so I commit to, uh, getting her what she's asked me for by the end of next week.
The end of next week?
Yes.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you all will hear anything, but it allows her to move forward with McGill, so I am beholden.
Terry need to do her part by the end of next week. That's what she's saying. But then we gotta wait for Diane to get...
Once, once Miguel has the potential focus group list, then we'll start communicating on getting the dates and the groups set up. And then emails will be sent out to the participants.
I understand, yes.
Could you explain really quickly for those new people who may be listening, when you say a list of focus groups? When we get the list of focus groups, do you mean, uh, different companies, different developers? What does that mean to, in layman's term? So that someone who's just listening can understand the process we are in?
So, um, different focus groups. So town council would be considered a focus group. Um, nonprofit stakeholders, athletics, that, those would be considered a focus group. Um, so just a different variety of public input.
So for a variety of public input on what we want the multi-purpose center to look like, to hold, to, to serve, to, what they would provide in it, what would the focus group be entailing?
Between the site-specific and the comprehensive plan, yes.
So it deals more with just the multi-purpose facility? Because we are working simultaneously on a comprehensive plan. So it really deals with recreation, wants, needs, and future goals as a whole.
Just one comment. I thought that, I don't know whose idea it was, the tent at the festival with images, there were visuals, and you could get your stickers and make your votes. I thought that was very effective.
And honestly, um, between kids, adults, seniors, everybody had, um, an opportunity to be a part of it. Um, and one thing we're able to do, um, 'cause I actually got to work with Nate and Luanne out there. Um, if you were a visitor, we, um, put a V on the sticker to be able to help distinguish between residents and non-residents. And honestly, probably over, um, 252 residents during that weekend, um, they were able to get feedback just from the residents.
Very good.
Okay, Ms. Hawkins, that, that your update?
Yeah, thank you so much, and we'll just wait.
Council, sorry.
When, it's okay. When Town Manager Parker provides what you need and then you, um, get the focus groups, we'll await... get the focus groups, we'll await another update, because we wanna be updated along the whole process, and I thank you for what you do.
Next up, uh, do we need to go over that, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, they always stop?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So we crossed that, uh, because we talked about that earlier. And next up is the Winterville Library, uh, uses library card signup, um, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins.
So September is National Library Card Signup Month. Uh, we know that, um, at the end of August, we had our Pitt County Schools, students going back to school. I would encourage families in Winterville to bring their, um, children out to the library. Uh, they can study there, uh, you can hold meetings there, um, and you can actually get yourself a library card. We know that readers become leaders, and we want to amplify, uh, reading here in Winterville. Uh, we want to ampl- amplify that we have a very good library here, um, here in Winterville, and it needs to be spoken to more than once. Uh, I started becoming specifically engaged in the community, uh, when library hours were going to be cut. And I know, um, with, as a mother of three, and my children were young back then, if I didn't have a lot of money, I knew that I could take them to the library and through reading, they could explore and go on adventures. So I am and encourage everyone to go out, get your child, or get yourself a library card. Um, it is Library Signup Month, and utilize our library in, in our community.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And Councilman Moy, you serve on our library, by the way. All right. Uh, any items for further agenda, further work sessions?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, one thing that actually was brought up this evening, so I'm going to put it in there. I would like us at some point to look at our ordinances, and if there aren't ordinances, possibly developing ordinances on street parking. That is an issue in several areas. Um, I would like for us to get an update and look at the, the language for drafting, um, for the ADU, Auxiliary Drilling Unit. And then finally, um, this has been brought up occasionally, but some downtown maintenance slash update, I think we all received an email, and, and, and it was pretty correct. Um, I know we have talked about even just the striping, since we changed the traffic pattern, um, even standing out when we're doing the polls and stuff, sometimes it's confusing to people, but we just need to have some time to look at what we can possibly afford to do, to do something with our downtown area, whether it's maintenance, update, um, to help support our small business owners and make our community, um, a place that we're proud of. And those are the three items I'd like for us to work at in the future.
Anyone else have any items for the future work session? If not, you can always email, email them in to, uh, Town Manager Parker or, uh, Mr. Harvey. Okay?
Uh, Mayor, I do have one, I'm sorry. Uh, it pertaining to, um, you, uh, phase, I think it phase two over there to Copper, Copper Creek. Um, the request is need to have a better plan when they get ready to do phase three in the future, uh, on their drainage. They have a serious problem on, especially with phase two. Uh, it is complete. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let's go back, I'm sorry. It's phase one, that's where they are having problems. Phase two, whoever was the developer for phase two, that did a better job on the drainage system. The ones, homeowners in phase one, they are requesting, whenever they get ready to do phase three, they need to look at what they done on, in phase two. Do I have you confused?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go back. There's phase one, two, and three.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
Phase one is complete
Right.
And phase two is complete.
Right.
Okay.
But you saying what they did
Okay.
Phase two is better.
Phase two, it was done a lot better than what they did in phase one.
Okay.
I have to give some previous, uh, staff credit on this, too. During phase one, they developed it under what was called low-density development. Our staff at the time had net, who reviewed stormwater, um, and proposals, fought really hard to try to prevent that type of development. It was reviewed by the state, they had state authority to do it, we, we could not regulate. They chose one of the avenues that the state allowed for stormwater, but, um, we have expressed at least to the proposed engineer for the phase three that we would love if they would not go low-density with that development. Um, it's my understanding they are gonna be, they're not gonna be designing it with a low-density development, though.
Right, okay. Good, thank you.
So I follow exactly what you're saying, I know exactly what you're referring to.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I got you now. You got me now, I got you now. One, two, and three.
Right. Got it.
And, and I'm sorry about that, will y'all forgive me? Thank you.
No, that's, that's all right. But I couldn't follow you at first, but yeah, when you came back around, I understood what you were saying.
I, I just kept it simple.
Right, okay.
No, we got it.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, if none, uh, manager, can you, uh, look over these announcements, please?
Oh, absolutely. Um, we have Market on the Square, School Spirit Night, National Night Out, Back to Schools Bash, Thursday, September twelfth, four thirty to seven thirty, at two fifty-two Main Street. Our market property, Planning and Zoning Board Meeting will be held Monday, September sixteenth at seven P.M. Here in the Assembly Room. Board of Adjustment is scheduled for Tuesday, September seventeenth at seven P.M. Here in the Assembly Room. Coffee with a Cop is scheduled for Friday, September twentieth, at, from nine to ten thirty in the Community Room. We have a movie in the park, Paw Patrol, The Mighty Movie, scheduled for Fri- Friday, September twentieth. The mayor's excited. Um, from seven thirty to nine at the Winterville Recreation Park Amphitheater. The Recreation Advisory Board Meeting for September will be Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at six thirty in the Operations Center. Next Human Relations Board Meeting is Thursday, September twenty-sixth at seven P.M. In the Executive Conference Room here in Town Hall. The next movie in the park will be a date night, Top Gun Maverick, PG thirteen, on Friday, September twenty-seventh, from seven thirty to nine at the Winterville Recreation Park Amphitheater. Our next Agenda Review Meeting will be Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty-four, at four P.M. In the Town Hall Executive Conference Room. The next Market on the Square, uh, for October will be Thursday, October tenth, from four thirty to seven thirty on our Mar- Market Property, two fifty-two Main Street. And lastly, our October Regular Town Council Meeting will be Monday, October fourteenth, starting at six P.M. Here in the Assembly Room.
Thank you. Uh, y'all according just, governing y'allself accordingly to the, these announcements. Hopefully, you can make an all. Uh, next up, uh, Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have no, uh, report per se, I, I will take a moment, though, to point out, we do have a closed session tonight pursuant to the statute identified in your agenda, uh, wherein, uh, council can give, uh, guidance to staff about the potential acquisition of, uh, real estate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hawkins?
Yes, I wanted to bring up, I know, um, Town Manager Parker was unable to attend the meeting in July. Um, she, she sent correspondence in terms of the, um, town app, the Winterville Town App. Um, I don't know if she wants to speak to it, and if I could recall, that should be up and running by October. Um, I wanted to.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I do have an update, uh, and an adjustment in the time schedule. Due to a variety of days that I unfortunately was not at work, because I have been out sick, we have had to push that back slightly, uh, into October. So I am scheduled to speak with the, uh, one of the young ladies that I'm working with on the team with, uh, GoGov, and get that timeline, uh, readjusted. And as soon as I have a GoLive date, I will report back to council.
And so
Tentatively, it's October. I would say probably the middle of October, but I'll get a specific date and report back to council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And then also, I wanted to mention, um, Town Manager Parker. I did share a few months ago, I have to go back specifically in terms of housing and protecting those, um, who may feel like they are discriminating, discriminated against for one reason or another. Um, there is nothing set in place, um, for that, and I know that there was conversation, um, um, to bring forth an update on that, did we have?
You must be reading my mind this evening, because, um, Town Attorney Lassiter and myself, uh, have been discussing that item, and we were working on it, scheduled to give you an update this evening. I will say that there's been no quick and easy answer to who and where those concerns get addressed. So, uh, Town Attorney Lassiter and myself continue to research and hope to bring back some solidified answer, one way or the other, uh, hopefully by next meeting.
And, and I'll jump in just briefly, um, uh, what I've learned is that the Affordable Housing Act, North Carolina Affordable Housing Act, and North Carolina Fair Housing Act are very complicated matters. Um, and, and I, to be quite honest with you, none of my towns have, um, adopted a, any, uh, uh, town, uh, code of ordinance that relates to that, so this is a case of, uh, first impression for me. Um, um, but I will, uh, I, I will continue to work with the town manager to bring information forward that, uh, I think will answer your questions. I, I, I would ask, because we, we did talk about this in June, um, i- if, um, um, i- if any of the council would like to forward, Terry or myself, you know, specifically what we're looking at, because we could spend weeks going through this information and make sure that we're sort of at least initially focused in on your concerns or questions. I'd hate to be, be running down one road and, and be wasting time when I probably need to be going down another. Um, and the very last thing I was gonna say is, that one thing I'm, um, even though I'm still researching and educating myself, our, uh, what is it, chapter ninety-three that we have in our code of ordinance, th- that was written nineteen ninety-two, and, and, and since then, the statute, the case law has changed dramatically. And I think probably one of the things I want to recommend is all that come out, because I, I don't think, and again, I haven't finished, I don't, I don't think that there is, um, that, that a, a, a town, um, uh, board, or the town has the authority to itself sanction or put a place punitive matters on, um, uh, um, regarding affordable housing. Um, I'm pretty sure the North Carolina Human Relations Commission is where all that goes, or, or to, um, Pitt County Superior Court, so, um.
And I will say, and this is with the utmost respect and love for our planning board, but I do not think that, and I don't know what the premise was behind when that
Ninety-two, that's before my time.
That's a long time ago. But I don't think, and I hope Mr. Killian being president and a member of that board would agree, that that is not a proper place for those items and concerns to be, uh, yeah, verify, presented and then addressed.
So, so under that ordinance for fair housing, what is included, you're looking at extracting some of it, because it's not aligned with, I just need
Yes, ma'am, I, and again, I, I, I'm throwing out the caveat that I'm, I'm still researching, but everything that I've seen so far, th- there's no authority given to the, a, a town, any town, and specifically a, a planning board in that town to look over, um, uh, leases and to make decisions on whether there's discriminatory practices. I, I just don't think that we have that authority here. I haven't found the statute that allows it. I think that would be if, if somebody believes that they're being discriminated against in, 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 um, in a, in a housing issue, um, they would, they could, you could always file a, a complaint in Superior Court, but of course, that takes time and money. Um, the other is an administrative proceeding through the North Carolina Human Relations Commission. I think that's where everything's gonna route.
Could we filter that as a resource? For example, if someone is coming to me, or several people, do we have something in place to say, here's a resource for that? I mean, you just stated it, so, I mean, I would not have any knowledge of it, uh, beyond, you know, I, I was thinking we had a fair housing, um, ordinance. Now, with that being extracted, could we now say, we don't have that, but here's where you can go?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is that something we can do?
Yes, ma'am, uh, and, 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 um, not to complicate it, but to take it one step further, I think what we're gonna find out is this, this close like the EEOC, you know, when somebody claims that they weren't traded fairly at their place of work, you call up the EEOC, and they basically give you the paperwork to, to get the process rolling. I think we're gonna find out that something similar to that with the, uh, again, North Carolina Human Relations Commission.
Sure.
No, I was just gonna say that I think what, uh, Keen and I will plan to do is to prepare probably a memorandum with information to give out to council, in addition to update you all at a meeting, uh, to give you those resources, so you then can share, and we will also include those in our resource lists moving forward.
Sure, thank you, and I'm sorry to take up time, but we didn't have a meeting, and I have, so, um, in terms of the Pitt Community College President coming and visiting, I, I want to welcome her along with everyone else. I'm so glad that she is here, and I am hoping that she can help to get an expansion on programs that are needed, uh, by those who live in, um, Winterville. Uh, for example, my daughter's having to ride one hour away, uh, to, uh, uh, to get certified in a program that can be here in Pitt Community College, and this has been talked about for the last three years. So I welcome her, and I just want to let you all know, this is something that I, um, e- am eager to get moving in Pitt Community College. There's lots of programs that are in neighboring community colleges that are not in Pitt Community College, so I'm, welcome Dr. Farr, and I hope she's ready to get some of these things here. Um, and then the next is the town-based transportation. Town Manager Parker, I know, um, last, um, we voted, um, that you, uh, were able to go ahead and start researching, um, some potential, um, help support in that area. I don't know if you have been able to do it yet, but I just wanted to bring that to the surface.
Yes, ma'am, I will probably be reaching out for clarification from council and direction on exactly what I am to bring back. Is it just a list of those that provide transportation, and if there's fees associated with that, who's paying for those fees, et cetera? So I need some clarification moving forward.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and, um, then lastly, I don't know if, that we have a reports from, um, from our chief, but, um, we did bring, we did have Ms. Leary, uh, come forth on the last meeting in terms of trucks in the neighboring, um, vicinity of where she lives. Um, and just Chief Williams, I don't know if you need, wanna speak to that, or what has occurred? I know they said there was an ordinance that was being violated, and I just would like an update.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Um, so at the time, we were dealing with the whole situation, the majority of the vehicles had been moved, and Ms. Leary was happy about that, but as she expressed, he had done that before, once he got to a point where he was about to get in trouble for it, he moved them all. Um, we stopped paying attention, and he moved them all back. Unfortunately, none of our ordinances really addressed his situation. The only sit- situation that could be addressed, uh, on that property is the fire lane. Um, of course, Chief Moore isn't out, so I can't speak exactly to it, but I know that a memo that he courtesy copied me was sent to the gentleman as far as what was required to maintain the, um, the fire lane as, as the law allows that. Um, but as far as the vehicles being parked there, um, the ordinances have not changed, so if he brings them back, he brings them back.
Well, I will say that, uh, Mr. Gay and I were riding around checking out some locations today, and we did go by that particular lot. in the one trailer and the little white car that has been there uh, for some time are still there, but everything else has been moved. I will say they need to cut the grass. So Evan and I will talk about getting a, a letter out to them for code enforcement, but there's a lot of grass needs to be cut around town. But uh, so far, those vehicles have not returned.
That's right.
Thank you Chief.
Yes ma'am.
Councilwoman.
That was it. I just wanted to say the Human Relations Board uh, was visible at the Winterville Watermelon Festival. We were visible on Saturday and Sunday. I'd like to thank um, the Chamber of Commerce um, and the, those who helped to put the vendors together for allowing us to be there. They're very kind, helpful. Um, and we got a lot of feedback which we will bring to the next Human Relations Board meeting. Also with the back-to-school bash, um, I'm gonna just ask that, I don't know if it's okay if we are visible then as well. We just wanna be in and around, um, just letting the town, people know that the Human Relations Board is here.
I certainly think that will be perfectly fine and I'm sure they look forward to having everyone.
Council, you finished, uh, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilman Moy.
Uh, yes. Uh, first, I'd like for us to um, um, uh, the reason why that we have not resumed the urgent repair program yet.
You're asking for an update?
Yes.
So, uh, I have reached out multiple times to Rebuilding Together, who is the organization we have been contractually aligned with to move forward with this program. They have had a change in executive directors. Uh, I have left messages and enlisted the assistants of Don, Harvey, our town clerk, to also reach out to their office to see if we could try to reach back out to me. That has not taken place yet, but that certainly has not uh, kept me from continuing to reach out and I will continue to do that. I do know that Anthony was in a, a tour of sorts yesterday, talked with Jonas Hill, the, I guess he's planning director now with the county. I'm so proud of him. Uh, and we can discuss their program. Uh, don't know if there's any ways to work together. Currently they have a scattered site urgent repair program. Uh, but I'll be reaching out to Jonas to see if I can, see if he can offer anything of assistance or might even come to present at a council meeting in the near future. Uh, but currently that is the update. So we don't have any forward motion, but we continue to track.
We do not have no other options, no more than what you just discussed.
I don't have any for you to see me miss though.
Okay, and.
But if I may though, it's certainly not a lack of trying on our part.
And the second thing is that one of our North Cemetery sign, I had, has been requested several years ago to raise, have that sign raised up. And I think, I thought we came up with a plan.
We did and we were supposed to get feedback from council and that did not happen. Uh, so what we will do since it's been so long is we will re-present the uh, suggestion option that staff had come up with uh, to this council, because this council has not seen it. We will ask for that same feedback so that we can determine uh, if it's something you all would like us to see move, to see move forward with and uh, then we'll know how best to proceed.
I would like to place it on, on the agenda for next month.
Absolutely.
And last, uh, again, I'd like to thank everyone of your kind words, your phone calls, your cards um, on the past and my mother. And uh, you just don't know how much that means when you hear a kind word when you very, very weak. It, don't, don't, don't get me wrong now. I didn't bounce back and, you know, like a hero, but it did help me, you know, make it through the night. And especially when I'm lonely time, I can remember and think about um, those kind words that was, was given to me. And plus some that came by and visit also. And uh, they knew who they are. I, I just don't want to start calling names, uh, because I might miss someone. So again, to everyone that came, I say thank you. And the one that couldn't come but prayed for us, I say thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, good evening. Uh, just wanna say thank you to all the staff, um, to the council for all that you do. Um, I do want to lift up a couple items, um, as far as our reimagining or updating our website. And I know that the GoGov is in October. Just wanted to get an update about the website, um, regarding um, transparency when people um, say that they have reached out for some type of work order or things of that nature. Um, also, I cannot remember if there was any type of monies in the budget for a public relations or someone to kinda help out with that task as far as with um, anything that's technical assistance, um, so on and so forth. Also with um, the league of municipalities, you know, do we have a contact person with them to help us with technical assistance, um, and things of that nature?
Website. We have a company that does all of our information technology, VC3, and they're the ones that, they designed the website. They are the ones helping us redesign the website. The homepage has been drafted. They're in the process of trying to create the, the internal skeleton, if you will, of, of the site. Uh, we do have a website committee of staff members. They will look at that. They will give input. Uh, I will follow back up with them to, to see uh, where we are because again with me being out, we've missed some communications. I'll get an update for everyone. Uh, we don't have a, a public information officer. Don's been sort of carrying that weight currently. Uh, and departments have been managing their own page. I think everyone acknowledges that once the new website gets up and, and goes live, that uh, the departments minus a couple will have to step up and manage their pages more actively. Um, that is not happening holistically throughout the town. And I include administration and uh, my office as well. We'll have to more actively manage things and hopefully get our information uh, up to date and keep it such.
Do we also have um, internships available for things of that nature? Have we ever um, looked into having internships to work with our town? Um, because I know sometimes it's a heavy lift on you as one person. So if you're out, you know, who, who has that responsibility to kinda bring it forward when you're out?
Well, hopefully I won't be out with any length of time that it keeps things from being brought forward. We do have interns. We have lots of, we have them in police, we have them in fire, we've had them in parks and rec. Um, we've had them historically in planning. I've had an administrative intern. Unfortunately, trying to bring on an intern that can carry the weight of what you're talking about is difficult. But we certainly have them in and they do administrative type work, um, and they help departments specifically um, a- as needed. So, uh, but yes, we do use interns as.
Gotcha. Now as far as the uh, website update, could council get an email or something about that? Do you have a timeline?
I will get you an email by the end of next week.
Okay, perfect. Um, also, I just wanna say thank you all for um, wearing your purple um, to raise awareness for Recovery Month. Um, you know, I know that we all, we don't have to shake heads or nod, but we all um, know someone who knows someone um, who deals with recovery or have that lived experience. So I appreciate uh, all the staff and the council and everyone who um, has on a purple ribbon or wore, wore something purple. Also to the Watermelon Festival um, committee and volunteers and EMS and everyone. Um, it was a great time and I'm grateful that it was cool. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yeah, I told them whoever ordered the weather for this year, like they were getting a pay raise.
Thank you.
Oh, you ordered it?
Did I do?
We're gonna double your. Absolutely, just kidding, absolutely. Um, I'll just be brief. I thank you for everybody being here this evening. I appreciate all the support from fellow council members, from staff. Um, I just wanna say although their great adventure has come to an end, I congratulate once again our 12 U All-Star Cal Ripken team. Um, they represented us well in Branson and, and God bless those families and the sacrifices they made in that venture. Um, it was wonderful to see one of our local recreation teams make it that far. And that's it for this evening.
I think I've said it all. Said it all.
Well, as far as, um, as far as me, I just wanna say thank you to all staff. Um, as usual, keep the town running. And also, um, to the people that are listening, uh, I think Councilwoman Hawkins and the rest always say, come to a meeting. I think that's echoed throughout. Uh, you know, we take your advice, we listen, and we make our decisions. Uh, so, you know, uh, that's what we do. But if you want your voice heard, you need to come and uh, come to the meetings. Uh, there's a public comment section. You can voice your comments there. Uh, you know, you know, after things are voted on, is kinda the wrong time to start voicing your opinion. We want to hear your opinion before we vote on these items. Uh, so, I encourage you and I encourage everyone out there that's listening, you know, be a part of this, uh, cause that's why we have a public comment section. So, or you can email your comments in to Don and Don will give them to us. So, that's what I'd like to leave you with today. Uh, we get ready to go in a closed session. If I can get a motion to go in closed session.
Make a motion that we go in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Moy, uh, second by Councilwoman Hawkins. If you could please vote. Motion carried to go in closed session. Motion carried to go in closed session.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
A second.
Oh.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second, a motion made by Councilwoman Harrell, a second by Councilman Moi, all in favor vote by kicking your clicker.
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting is adjourned.